Yeah, no clue, just keep going.
Okay. Uh, destruction of claims and warrants up to fiscal year twenty.
Yeah, this is just something annually we do. Um, all of them at this point are scanned anyway, so this is just. Kind of just cleaning things out, so we have a little more room again.
What's paper to store?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to for the destruction claims and warrants up to before twenty twenty.
Yeah, I'll second that. All right. All in favor, I.
Uh huh.
I both. Yeah, straight away. Uh, Shannon Butler, Public Health, is one of her opioids fund allocation requests.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
Um, so I was doing a bunch of research last week on what we can use the opioid funds for, and it's kind of exciting what we can do. There's a couple of curriculums that um our nurses are going to be trained in. We're going to be starting to do them in the school districts and then um kids of outlying communities that are actually in Worth County, but maybe don't go to a school um in Worth County. Um, there's also a media campaign that we can do. Um, I was telling Lexie, I'd like to get down on Highway nine, that big bulletin board over there. And then I, I think there's a bulletin board as you're heading towards um Forest City fertile area. I think there's a bulletin board on that highway nine two there um like to do that. So there's different funding as as um under the opioid settlement. The one is strictly about what you can spend the money on. And so there's two curriculums, Hope Curriculum and Project Aware, it's called. And it's set up for different levels of ages of kids appropriate to what you talk to them about, of course. And so um along with what we want to do in our office and then WCAT continuing to do, we're requesting thirty five thousand dollars today to start doing that, start doing all the education that can be um done under that settlement grant. So, and I talked to Kelly Gertis, um the gal that does our tobacco prevention program with the WCAT. And she was very happy with that a lot too, because Prater Riddle will continue their teaching of the older kids and the intervention um center and stuff like that. Um, we'll continue to do that. And then the media campaign, which is kind of a big thing to do as well. So if you guys are good with that, because I think there was like eighty. There's like, is there like eighty thousand, I think, giving their Jackie.
Um, there's ninety eight, there's ninety eight now.
Ninety eight thousand, so that's going to be our initial ask right now. And then as um we actually have a meeting um on Lexi's going to go on next Tuesday to WCAT. We'll talk more about, because last year we didn't use really not that money sitting there. We need to use it, use it in our county for what it's intended for. And so we're going to go um further on that, what um the WCAT can do. And then what we're going to do through our office to do that um in the classrooms, media campaigns, that sort of thing. So now is there, I asked you Jackie a little bit, isn't there something else that a certain percent of it that can be used?
I.
Yeah, I've been.
Um.
I'm sorry, decipher.
I was going to ask you, did you, you use the rest of what you requested the first time?
It will be used, because I've been.
Because we're going to have to do a budget amendment for this and probably for that, because there's nothing in the budget for this year.
Yeah, so yeah, you'll help me.
That's on.
We'll get that done. Thank you, yes. Yeah, and and uh honestly, we probably won't. I don't know how, we probably don't need a budget amendment, because we won't be over the budget of what was requested initially. Our bottom line is going to be quite less, so.
Yeah, we'll just keep an eye on.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if we, yeah, we'll add to the next time if we come and ask for more money, that probably might put us over then, but.
Good.
Yeah, so that's kind of what we're requesting. You guys are good with that.
And do you have documentation of that, so that I can turn it down to whoever.
Of what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yep, I bet you, I would write it up in like a word document for you.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thirty five thousand?
Yes.
Good.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion.
To thirty five thousand to them, also this program.
Okay, there's motion to second thirty five thousand of the opioid funds, use money to uh public health. Any other discussion out? Here none, all favor I.
All right.
I opposed. All right, thank you. So like it'll be a good thing and.
Yeah.
Use the money on something to. Hopefully a few kids will listen.
I know, that's always what we hope for.
Yeah, yeah, all the way around, I guess.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, ARP funds request for conservation. Hi Jim.
I got three different contractors to give me estimates. Um, the one we're kind of leaning towards is Sinister Plumbing and Heating, and actually doing uh boiler system. Just, but not, not the actual heat pump, but just a boiler system for the heat and then just your conventional AC. Um, I don't know, get the code with me here. Um. We did get bids back or estimates back from Sinister from Johnson Heating and Cooling and. Oh, Tyson's business.
Ursidave.
Yeah, Ursidave. Um, his came in at just over, Sinisters came in at just over eleven thousand. And that's minus the, you know, gas plumbing and electrical work, and that's what all of them were, because.
Whatever they got to change.
Yeah, whatever they got to change, we got to change. So don't even look yet.
Okay, now I take care of Keenan's.
Yep.
Heat issues.
Yeah.
Either way, cool.
But I think from talking with Jackie, we need, I need to come to you guys and have you officially say that you're going to spend ARP money on it. So that way, it can be a verified project, so to speak.
Yep, so I was looking at that this morning too, we got. Got some funds, we got that earmarked for the end of the year, so.
Yeah.
They normally do a resolution.
And and just, just as LP tank wise, um, we're probably going to buy. And what we'll do is we'll probably use like REAP money or something like that, that I have, you know, designated for projects that I can do, use that. So I wouldn't necessarily have to hit it all, but.
So is there a top end that you'd like as far as ARP funds, this eleven plus, maybe? You know, up to fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I'd say up to fifteen. And could be, I feel pretty comfortable with, and then walking up there the difference out of either REAP or whatever, if there is one.
So that's on. You can get an LP taken, I want to do, get an LP taken. Yeah. So you want to do a resolution next week? Yes.
That's great, thank you.
Yep. No problem.
If you get six.
That's good, yeah, good place for it. So hopefully it'll last us. Oh, last fifteen, twenty years, it'll all last all of us, I hope, right?
But that's what, that's what the goal is.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Shannon. All right, discussion of possible action, DR four seven nine six, public assistance from June twenty first flooding. So mark there's. FEMA funds out there?
Well, they, they opened up the application period for that disaster. Recovery. Um, and the deadline to apply for that is soon to be September.
Yeah.
In the categories, um, Kim Boddy did go ahead and, you know, when they did the assessments, which track that. Um. Basically, Worth County had, you know, that, that full amount of. Costs incurred from fixing the roads with manpower, equipment usage and materials. And the amount of money spent, the eighty five percent that could be recoverable from that most to forty two thousand, it's under ninety two dollars and eighty two cents. Um, seventy five percent is recoverable from FEMA and then ten percent is recoverable from the state. And then fifteen percent is local funds matching, so. Um. I guess the next step would be is for you to, as a board, to decide if you want to go ahead and. Make that application.
Let that.
Yep.
And so that's the application.
That has to be probably, it, the county has to submit it. Um. It's done through um EM grants. Which is just like when Northwood had their, all of the tree damage from that December fifteenth tornadoes, derecho, whatever you want to call it. Um, they did that on themselves, um. It's something I can assist you with, the state has, I mean, because, you know, from the earlier tornadoes this spring, the flooding that Clay County and all those. You know, over there, they have several people working that they've actually assigned people to each district to help the applicants go through this process. So you know that you have to walk through alone.
Um.
The uh, her name is Maria, the app, the representative for District Two, which we are in, um, made the remark when Kim sent all of the information in. That it was the most thorough and complete um information she'd seen sent to her of anybody.
Good.
Um, so. I think a lot of the hard work is already done. Um, I would say Jackie, probably you would be.
I think Kim should just keep going with it.
Well, she needs the information, like the SAM number and stuff like that. Um, AJ probably will have to be the one signing it, is the executive officer for the county and stuff like that. Um. You know, I don't know if it has to be, you know, like if Rich has to do it, so I don't, we've never been through there. One of my thoughts is, you know, this is in comparison to the, the. Levels of disaster that other counties of have been subject to this spring and early summer. This is small, but this is a good process for us to go through on this one, so that if we ever get into a situation like Clay County is in this year with Spencer and stuff. We've been through it, we kind of know, you know, our first time is the major thing, you know, this is a, you know, and this is a sizable amount of money we're looking to recover. Especially when you're looking at budgets being.
Right.
Tight and stuff like that, and I think it's worth, definitely worth going to get and stuff.
Would be seventy five percent of that forty two plus thousand.
Well, no, that's, that is seventy.
Oh, okay, that is.
The, the actual amount is, I didn't make, I made, it's.
Maybe over fifty thousand, I think.
Yeah, just a little over fifty thousand, so.
Yeah. I think between you and Kim and Rich and myself, we can.
Yeah.
And if we need, I'm sure we're going to need the SAM's number, federal, federal money, right? You can just push out.
If you already got the SAM's number, that's a major thing, because getting those.
I do that every year.
We had to get it for that. Yeah, we had to get it for something else a couple of years ago. They are P funds.
I do it every single year.
So now you got to.
Yeah, not only do you have to get it, then you have to re-verify that you're still who you are. It's.
Okay. And he's only for federal grants, even on you.
Yeah.
For hourly stuffs.
Yeah, it's so much more complicated. It was so easy when I first started and it's, it's awful now.
When I was there off watershed, that guy, one guy had had over forty hours and they're just getting through this process to get a SAM's number.
Well, and I switched email addresses, I haven't switched it on that yet, because I'm scared of what it's going to.
Scared of the repercussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the worst time it took me, well, I'm.
I did, you know.
No, that wasn't the first time.
Oh.
It was like after COVID, after COVID, everything just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Reset button.
But I think.
That's what I would remember.
Worth it to go, you know, through this process.
Well, I think that the bulk of the hard paperwork is probably done as far as documenting.
Well, the good thing is we didn't have major reconstruction anything, so we don't have to go through any project costs and make sure that we're applying with all that stuff.
The procurement process and all that for, like if, you know, if they're talking about rebuilding schools and stuff like that for some of the places, that's the major headaches. And then buying roadstone and placing it and stuff like that, and tracking your, tracking your equipment, man hours. Um.
Yeah, all of ours is submitting our.
Your time sheets.
Time sheets and locations and 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 it's. It's a lot easier than when you have a major catastrophe and you've got structures and big projects to, then it gets to be a really big hassle.
Yeah.
Who did it for drainage once and it was, you know, fun and we didn't get that much money back.
Right. Well, they're estimating around over forty thousand, I think it's definitely worth doing. I do too, we kept track of the stuff, like I said, that's the hard part, so the hard, just say all of it, but it's a good bulk of it, so great. Yeah, if you guys are willing to, like I said, I'll do what I have to do. Um, yeah, we had our names readings, you can get started on the.
Yeah, I, I don't know, we can, we can sometime when, if you, Kim, I want to come over, we can pull that up.
Yeah, I don't know how that works, I know a lot of times it was just, seemed like it was always internal, unless they changed the process since our last FEMA disaster, I don't. It was usually just submit everything on the internet and usually have a representative come sit down with us and it just. Right, here's what you need and they help you with it and it's.
I can, I can send you the link of where to go get into the, because you'll have to sign up to get into that program and. To get access to there and then sign up and then I think I, once you say nothing, get in there, I can see all the stuff.
So, yeah, whatever.
You have good, I can give you guys that. Uh. Representatives emailing and stuff.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you have questions, reach out to either her or me, or I, I probably won't have the answers, but I can find somebody that will have.
Okay, so is there a motion to go ahead and uh pursue the DR four seven nine six public assistance application?
I'll make that a motion.
Good, I'm sorry. All right, another discussion. Here now, they ride.
All right.
Bye. Oh. All right, thank you, everybody. Building grounds. Any issues out there?
Uh, just leave it on there.
Okay, we're going to have some discussions, some other stuff, uh, water main project is. So we don't well pump stuff, so. Uh, Melissa is not going to be here today.
No.
Um. Sounds like Ready Fuels. Um. Or was that where the terminal button you have in chemicals? And it sounds like that facility can be modified to work for Ready Fuels. So I think that's the route they're taking now, instead of building an entire new facility, is actually modifying that to. Get their project going, so sounds like maybe they'll start sooner than expected, so. Want to see how that goes.
Plus, that's not just sitting there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, because I mean, it's still structured and there's somebody's made packs on it.
No, no.
No, they're not.
Well, they weren't, um, that's, like I said, I know, uh, it was foreclosed on.
Yeah.
I think it was too many bucks to buy it for, but. So, um, people's service, you guys saw the.
Yeah, thing else for West Tech.
Yeah, the West Tech, so it sounds like we're gaining on the softeners. Uh, we don't know the resin results yet, but uh there are very not some programming issues, I guess, with them, could be part of the problem, but they also look at the. Because of the media and the filters has some age to it, they want to inspect that and see, make sure all that's working properly, so it'll be another twenty five hundred bucks for West Tech. To uh come and investigate that side, so we got a water plant, we got to make it run right.
Yes.
Otherwise, uh, lose some upset customers out there. So, do you guys like to approve the West Tech? Sales to uh go through and look at our water treatment plant?
I'll make that a motion.
Yep, in second. All right, see another discussion on it. Hearing none, all in favor, I.
Right.
I.
Bye.
Both?
Okay, I will call Jacob this morning, got to know that I'll move forward.
You'll have to see if I need to make a, I think I just signed this, or did you do that last docu sign that I sent your way?
No, because I think the one before that got me in trouble.
Oh, shoot.
I'm definitely, I will, I will do that, sorry. I was going to ask you about, that's why I didn't do it, so.
Yeah, I, I emailed you, hoping that, yeah.
Okay, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I had everybody just go into that stuff, so I don't know if I can sign this, or I could print this out if, if that works, otherwise.
They should.
We might get another one.
We printed like, sign it for a leaving vehicle, all you know.
Yeah.
Uh, Department had discussion. Anyone?
We will be having the safety meeting, going after the abortion Friday, we should sneak anything here, listening to workshop. Shouldn't be too long. And then uh, kind of go with the buildings and grounds, um. There's a question as far as like uh. Furnace filters and that sort of thing, and what do you have planned for taking care of those issues? Do you have any of that stuff over there? I know, I mean, it's not a, like a weekly or anything, but probably a big preseason, seasonal or uh five months a year or something. Because I think the ones over there are just, you know, they're just not then, but I'm just not a yearly one or anything.
I suppose probably just have larsens come in and look at all of them.
Do, do an annual inspection, you will be okay.
They can just go through them, check them all over, change filters, make sure we've got extra one there, just in case and do all the values they go to. Oh, especially they get changed over there. In the winter time.
Everybody just need a assessment for larsen.
Well, they, they run to, the air conditioning runs here too, so they're running both summer and winter, so.
I probably change them every.
Every six months, maybe.
I think. Yeah.
Whatever larsen say, and then, yeah, we just do that on our, I mean, as long as there's filters there, I don't mind changing those on our own, we can.
I guess, yeah, they do the basic, as long as there's. Have longer there.
Save the service call, yeah, yeah.
Well.
Always looked at that furnace for a few years, I still.
Right, I like the.
Oh, that's. I get out. I guess if you would just go ahead and change his filter and then closer here in the next month or two, we'll have.
Yeah.
Larson's coming and just look everything over.
Change him at my house.
And I'm sure you probably get them across. Oh, gosh. Hardware stores.
Do you have on that?
Probably by ours.
I'll talk to it.
If you need some, hardware stores got it, so.
Just uh, put a piece of tape on the, on the furnace and mark when you change it, that way, so everybody knows.
And actually, Mark took it upon himself that, well, he and I visited about the um generator over there. So he made a checklist, kind of went out there and did that for me, so our generator's not being checked. We have kind of a spreadsheet to follow along when he'll go out there each time. So if someone asks that I need and need to show proof that it's been done, start a spreadsheet, so we have that done too.
Awesome.
Yeah.
You guys just take control of it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It's just a little, few little things here or there, but, yeah.
One, one more generator on my checklist is nothing. One, one more generator on my checklist is nothing.
Right, exactly.
If you're a system.
Yeah. All right, any other department head discussion? Supervisor weekly, uh, compensation board appointments. So we need to point one for our, or one or two, I guess, for our county, to technically, cause we.
You found one.
Can't, can't everybody have? We got one that.
So you need one more, if depending on what you want to do.
Uh, Beth said she would do it, so we would just have to have her as well, the application and. And go from there, and as far as the other. Um. Do you want to stick with Randy, or do you want to do something different?
You were the one that mentioned, you know, we should find people that have, that, that do this for, you know, on a full-time basis.
Yep.
It would be good to have some input like that. Do you have any money in mind?
I don't, I just, it's, yeah.
I mean, that's a good start.
Yeah.
We can. Um. Do that, and then if I wanna stick with Randy for now. Don't bother me.
Yeah, I'm.
He's involved, he shows up.
If he wants to.
Shows up.
I don't know if he wants off or not. I think he asked one time, what, what do I gotta do? How long do I gotta be on you?
Oh, we can ask you, yeah, yeah, it was number.
Uh. I don't think.
So like, we don't want to reach out to him, just ask him if he wanted to do it again, or if he'd rather just.
Make him aware of the fact that it changed.
Yeah.
There's a lot more input they gotta get into it.
Yeah, he should.
It's one of those numbers, I think, disappeared for some reason, I don't know where some of these numbers could apply still, I don't know. I got it.
Yeah, if you want to chat with him and see what he does. And uh, if he does, fine. If he doesn't, that's totally fine, too.
Yeah.
We'll hope for somebody else, so I'll, I'll get ahold of Beth and have her uh submit an application, then. So then we can get that part started. Everybody else has got theirs, right?
Yeah.
Way it sounds.
Okay, so.
All right, yes. Weekly report for you.
Uh, didn't make it either one of mine, I doubled up meetings.
Yeah.
I, I was going off this week, I just had, but the week before I did have, I worked some about, it's just a. Quarterly meeting, we'll get another one come up here, we gotta review our annual bylaws for the state, so. Trying to set up another one, yeah. So, that's all I had.
Okay. Um, we just had a. Short special meeting with uh Care Connections. Uh. Discussing the. The new district mapping. And how that looks, so it's a lot better for us.
Hmm.
Um, and we'll actually be the smallest district. As far as population, which we like that, because everybody, most everyone involved is low. Um, I think they range from, ours is like a hundred and seventy some thousand, on, on up to like one point four million people, nearly in between, so. Um. We just got to decide. People are, the. Regions are going to bid or R F P process for region, you know, for these districts, I guess they're districts now, so. Um, Care Connections is planning on doing something, um, there has been some discussion of collaborating with different regions to go together to try to get this, so. Kind of in that process of what to do, because I think it starts since. September. So. Everybody's trying to figure out what everybody else is doing, but it's kind of interesting how they change the regions for the, the districts around now. Um. So in our district, Care Connections is the only. Uh, functioning. Region with a C E O that lives inside of it, and each one of them has kind of the same situation, so I think they're hoping they're. You know, like C I C S would take that area, social services would stay in that direction, or maybe go for those counties, and so. Plan is hopefully to, to go for that and, and uh, take over this, or take on this district. And hopefully keep. Our.
What we want.
Yeah, keep it small, keep it rural, and, and uh, keep it going, keep the services up, so. And we know we've had good experiences in Care Connections, so we can continue, we just had a few, a few other counties, Webster's the biggest one. We'd get Webster City, but otherwise it's a lot of likewise counties, because like they're thirty, let's say thirty six thousand.
Yeah.
And I'm down to us at seven, seventy five hundred, so.
You lost one county from before and picked up like four or five?
Yeah, so O C O would move on, move to the west, we'd get Dickinson and Emmett. Um, and then we'd get Hancock. Stack County. Webster County. Uh, Sioux, La Bega, Worth. Hancock, yeah, I guess there's fourteen, something like that, so, but like I said, smallest population wise, which is good, so.
So have other entities bid on?
Yeah.
That region?
Cause that's also been a discussion of the one to the south here, that actually goes from Mason City clear to Ames. That's a fairly large one, there's that, been that collaboration discussion, they might bid on our stuff as well, so.
And who dressed that pick?
It's the R F P process, yeah, we'll say that, you know, they've had the, all the services that everybody has done. That's what the state's gonna look at, is what services are you able to provide in this region? And.
Care Connections is what trying to.